I will call the meeting for Salsa Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners. Our meeting for April twenty third at sixteen in here in beautiful seaside. This is really kind of fun to be down here for a change and I would hope that maybe we can start doing this once, maybe twice a year. Do an evening meeting down in the city. We all will go. Yeah, so. Let's do budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance, they have a flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite or thank our audience for coming tonight. It's been great for tonight's six year here. And Mary, would you take your. Michelle McNamal, there. Michelle Lukey.
Here.
Michelle Alagria.
Yes.
Mr. Withers.
Here.
Michelle Lee, there. Michelle Merritt.
Right.
Any changes to the agenda?
Oh, it's an update on the stiff plan.
Oh.
In distribution event.
Okay, we're gonna head that to. I would entertain a motion to the agenda.
Oh.
Okay, and second, any other discussion? Mary, take your. Michelle Busman.
Yes.
Michelle McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Lukey.
Yes.
Michelle Alagria.
Yeah.
Michelle Withers.
Yeah.
Lee. Now, motion passes. Thank you. And public comment, any public comment, nothing on Zoom, anybody here in the audience? All right. And approval of number six of approval of four minutes from us meeting.
So.
Thank you, Pam, thank you all. Any discussion? Okay, okay, Kelly, page six. From the bottom. That's not like the last line and it shouldn't be Chair of the District asked if the total payment. Uh, those were date, asked if the date of the paper should be. It should have been three twenty-two or instead of two twenty-three. She got this finance report.
Oh.
She got the main name, the max, but it was the date.
The state of.
Okay, okay. And then. On page seven. Oh. Been there a couple of times, but it's about midway through. Uh, it referenced that Michelle Leakey asked, also asked if the board access to the updated stiff loan. Uh, it's not just a loan, just. The stiff loan or the stiff plan? The stiff, it's a, there isn't a stiff loan. There's a O-TIP loan which we pay back. We pay with our stiff plan. Stiff plans are. Same.
Take seven.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the minutes, look at corrections, I have a second. Okay. Right, the amounts will go away and then they won't go in. All right, we will go on the amendment first, so Mary, would you take? From the management. Michelle Busman, yes. Michelle McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Lukey.
Yes.
Michelle Alagria. Michelle Withers, yes. Michelle Lee, yes. Michelle Merritt.
Yes.
Now we'll do a, on the original. I know this is making this is so rough, so. On the original, uh. Michelle Busman, yes. Michelle McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Lukey.
Yes.
Alagria, yes. Michelle Withers, yes. Michelle Lee, yes. Michelle Merritt. Motion passed. Right. Moving on to.
After the small favor. So. The McDonald's, they went down and married Irish ladies people. That's taken.
Being there, all that. Okay, thank you. All right, reports from the Chair of the Commissioners and going to let Charles start the song tonight. Reports from the chairman.
What's, things of a, a good move to fall that we have these meetings around the district. Things, everyone invited out his films, so now see, it's good, see. I'm glad to hear and I think right, I'm gonna say. And then I have.
Thank you.
And I would like to just thank all those who have been. After so. Fine.
Okay. Uh, yes, I continue to circle on the board policy today and we're that working part of it and uh, we're now we. Directly the director there, so we'll be using. Um, and looking forward to our budget plan. Uh, when coming up here, our meetings to secure those and I'm very pleased with the. How many strategic things. There you go, but so. Uh, we get. Also on the board policy, committing the. Good thought.
I have a report.
Here, um.
Well, I just like recorded that. Debbie can come over and. So, um, I make it a point when I see the driver department, I consider it going through this. You know, it's really cool. They're like, they're so friendly and they will thank you for stuff you got. You know, that's the general consensus in my experience. I suppose.
Yeah. Um, and I'm just happy to be down in seaside for a change, even though I don't live that far from here, very soon we'll get down here, so it's kind of nice. Um, we're working hard on the policies. We're almost finished with those. We're starting to work on the director evaluation with that little bit of information. Our package site on that and our budget, so we're really kind of busy overall. Um, but it, I just feel really good that we're moving forward and it seems like that will be planned going so. That's my. And move on to financials. Kelly, would you walk us through?
All right. Up at seaside. Sun is shining, which is wonderful. Um. Okay. Um, I dashed for, I made a couple of changes, added the grants in there. But the value of those grants power, which we've used, repersonate every request that we have requested. As we have received those at this point, so we are just finishing uh. Doing our third quarter reporting. We're actually checking, I think it's there already. It's gone, so we're getting our third quarter reporting in. And getting that finished. And for that, and so hopefully those will go. Be twisted, so these ones push through really quick and we got our money quickly, so hoping that continues. Uh, stiff funding is coming through nice, so we're good to go there. Should, in our O-TIP loan, we should. Uh, so everything's rolling there. I don't have a lot to like. For the day report, I've been looking at the budget like crazy, so. Uh, track, like the draft of the draft went out at the end of March to. Check that last month for a little bit, everything with that. And so we submitted that, the budget that will come out for our actual meeting will look a little different, so just. Right, I have been looking kind of like outside the wall. But, all right, ready to jump into budget season?
There were a couple of things left from last month and had asked how many people you, how many employees you had. Used to budget for this.
For this fiscal year, so in looking at that more than number, and this is, this is my error and my learning in budget. Uh, the number that I actually put there was the number of employees that had at that time. Not the number of employees we were forecasting to actually have. We budgeted to have like twenty-two, twenty-three employees. Uh, fifteen that is in there is the number. So, uh, this year, we'll see higher number as I forecast it to happen.
So will their salaries and benefits be attached to the numbers that we will.
Yes.
I was wondering if perhaps there's been discussion about more people looking at the budget, including that department. Wondering if at the start, that each department would have all their checks be at all that we could see, so you say. Some operations to be into. Co-经营, I don't know, you know, with administration, et cetera. So that if there is. Like we indicate up strength or low and why and if we need trouble, we can, we're.
A budget doesn't really break out by department now. It's done as a whole. Uh, so it doesn't, you see all of the checks.
Right.
When you come in and sign, uh, and then that also is part of our quarterly audit that we do, so we have different people that are not signers, uh, come in and audit that. So.
And I thought we were supposed to, the board was supposed to receive that.
The audit.
The quarterly reports.
No. We get monthly reports.
You see the financials on a monthly basis. All I do with that is roll it up into a quarterly. Uh, and. Get reimbursed stopping.
Well, I thought, you know, having signed this check this afternoon, maybe it would, like we may have the that you could take for the O-N-O and have a feeling. I understand this was fast, apparently, um, so that would be a little O-N-O text on O-N-O appears could be one of them.
So in your financials, uh, in your expenses. You're going to see vehicle repair and outside services, so those are those, those items for fuel, that's.
Right.
So there, it's not broke out by department specific. I went to our management team. And asked for their input on our budget, uh, mainly because it had never helped before. And I think that it's important that not only do they have a say in their budget, but that they know kind of the process and what's going on with it. Uh, and then I was able to take that information from them. And with pray and go through and kind of, you know, make some assessments of, there were some things that were part of their like budget ask. Uh, that we were able to do this fiscal year. They didn't have to lead it to next fiscal year to do. Uh, so it kind of gave us some in the year, not big purchases, but some smaller purchases that were needed, uh, that we were able to do.
It's a new process that we're gonna see. It's kind of a learning process. They don't have a lot of budget experience, they're coming up. It's on.
The energy theme of last month too was checking, thanks for interest.
So I would shout to USB. Uh, and personally, I was really excited. I thought the industry was gonna be amazing. Well, you know, it's not that it's not there. It's that you have an interest rate that is offered for a personal savings account. You have an interest rate that's offered for business savings account, and then you have an interest rate that's offered for that next. That government interest rate. Not so good. All, it's a tiny bit higher. Like I said, we were getting two point.
Almost three percent, two.
But in USB, this is right about three percent. All that goes into changing that thing. And then it evolves. That's okay, we're very.
I doubt this is, uh, they have to have a standard national structure, yes, it's. So if you don't have a bunch of playing around and, and I give me, and reserve certain breaks and things, okay, so everybody, double pay and same price, thank you. So everyone, you know, have a couple of folks.
It was very small. I personally was very excited.
Yeah, I was actually excited because we changed some of ours and got bonus interest. Okay, thank you for being, I appreciate it. I have, um. So what I kind of did is I went through our income. And up through the third quarter, if I'm reading this right, we. We have received eighty-seven and a half percent of what we budgeted to receive, so that's more, that's more than seventy-five percent. So I'm looking that, and some of these, I know were, um. Estimated on the low side, so, so I'm looking that we have about, we expect about four hundred and ten thousand. Four dollars in income. And then I did kind of the same thing with the, um. With the expenses and we spent less than our seventy-five percent on our expenses, so it's to me, um, we're about ninety-nine hundred thousand dollars below. What we originally budgeted. So is that not right? So that, to me, that's looking.
We are looking really good, as Greg and I talked about this as well, as we go to budget, you know, and when Paul and I did budget last year, we didn't have any starting cash. We were, we were starting from nothing. Uh, I go with budget this year. We have something to start with.
Anybody have anything else on finances? You see, didn't you see? Funny.
I just just like to think of the board being this again.
I think they're a lot easier to read. Understand, a lot easier for artwork.
Okay, um.
But.
Sure, yeah.
And it seems that. When we read our straight. This, this number in there. Just about saying, well. We're looking around, where's that contingency that we have? Yeah. And so. Nice to see it.
Thanks for all your hard work and listening. This past year has not been easy for you, so we appreciate all of the work. Okay, um, Mary, would you hear the financials in two minutes, please, and say one. Thank you. Moving on down, continuing business, a, my, a, oh, the requirements and. That was your.
So going back to my second day when we had our meeting. And they listed out our.
We're gonna, we're starting.
This is going forward. Um, when we submitted the draft budget, we have now needed the requirement. Hey, so we're basically done. Lot of hard work, staff. To get to that. As you see. And I got.
And, you know, I'd like to add that. There are some requirements that we need to do, you know, that really should have ordered, and you took care of those, uh, gathering problems. That really, that's the, sure.
Well, it was the team as a whole kind of worked together.
You know. Been a long road, but it became a problem for us and very glad. And what?
Will we be receiving a budget that you submitted to O-D-A?
You should have gotten that. We've, we've already received that.
Yeah, the form gets submitted to O-D-A, we have to make it available to the public, it's not a new budget.
You should have gotten that in your email the day or the day after you left.
It's supposed to be excellent.
Nailbox. Also go back to your emails and play. But that budget, you know, there's a lot of numbers in there that are the same, but there's a lot of numbers in there that have changed, so look at it, but don't hang on.
Okay. You know, something else.
If you can't find it, just give Mary a call, too. I think I'm sure she can. If Charles.
I can't think really, Paul, yeah. I guess the point we have. You know, if you move forward, we're gonna have to. The predators on that door, trying to take some, I think Paul's writing a show. Then pray. H, so. So I'll say. We come along ladies. For your days. Almost over here.
Over here.
Thanks, Paul. Cool, thank you. Wasn't anybody presented what he, the other, seems right, yeah. It's, it's wonderful to watch. Thank you.
Right, budget committee of dates, just a good one, um. One of the. Many members has, I mean, they can. So we're going down to. So we've got two that's, who was the? And who was Lisa? Is there another one? Yeah, yes, who was, who was, isn't coming back, knew that, I thought Jeff would, you're right, sit, you know. Because it's changed, so.
It's our bottom line. Can't see all.
Now, we have three citizens to get.
Yes.
No, we have, we should be have.
Four citizens.
Yeah, four. We lost you.
Who was on?
I don't have the list coming right now. The, you have two, two new and the rest. Okay. Well, that, that makes it about what we probably. Yeah, I think we, since I've been on the board, I think we've only had one year that we haven't pulled. I don't even know if we had one that last year. All right. We want to the next. Update on our stiff plan, this is a good one.
This is a good one. We talked about this earlier at the strategic planning. Basically, O-D-A is allowing us to increase max cap. Two point four four million dollars. So what we've done is we've gone through, uh, looked at allocating additional money, air transit free. And our. Be a significant increase, number of stiff. And we wouldn't have, like we were last. Allow us to continue to receive stiff payments. Yes.
Yeah, we have to welcome that. So to accept those monies, I would need a motion to accept those. It's a. In a second, right, wait a second for me.
Second.
Discussion in Charlie, your son's, do you have something you can do?
I'll sign.
So is there any discussion, any questions on that? I think that's a great, great. Thing to happen, we have a player, it's part of our loan down a bit earlier, we'll still cut down on the interest and expect, I'm gonna, I should see that, you know, in ten years, which is important.
There's a really, next. All.
We're gonna be in twelve by two classes, so that, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-seven, and we need a local band. I'm wondering if the budget that's being published, when leaving the spot, maybe. Putting a little bit, running each year.
It's funny you say that, yes, we are new. But we'll see that. Now she's talking about putting aside. Future. Yeah. By being down that, that part of the principle, early, set key, now to.
We're not going to change that enough to O-TIP each quarter. We're gonna leave that as six. Um, and our plan is to take this additional funding that we're gonna put toward our O-TIP loan. And just make it on some payment at the end of the year. Once we receive all of those funds, know all of our funds have come in appropriately, and then we're just gonna make a little sum payment to that, and then our, we will continue our payment as they are now. Going forward, and then we're gonna pay off.
Really. See.
You like me? More, we're, yes, uh, question, um, probably this, uh, we first went over the doubt, um, the timing and the, uh. The on-time payments we got. In the last board. Payments.
This last payment was very quick. Um.
And they.
Oh, honestly, probably one of the biggest payments, I think I've seen from O-D-A. And our first quarter payment was delayed, but that wasn't, for us, it wasn't in O-D-A. Delayed, it was delayed because we still have things, we haven't finished on their checklists. Uh, so I'm hopeful that, uh. I will, so my hope is that I can get our reimbursements submitted before I go on vacation and I'll come home to pay. I'll be gone for two weeks, so we'll see.
Uh. Then, uh, they're, when do you see?
O-D-A doesn't share any of that. They don't share that. They just, we submit our reimbursements to them, they come through whatever their process is and. I know there was other districts, first quarter that had late payments that weren't in our shoes, so I don't, can't speak to this district, it's a lie. I'm just hopeful that they'll.
They seem to be. A lot higher. Continue to be higher. Staff. Rather than just having one person. Now have. Another person. Spend it.
A year ago, they had a hiring freeze. And they weren't, they didn't see anybody, they were talking about no longer creating that white line. On secondary roads because they were. Um, they didn't like to say that word, but, um, yeah. So I think they're also maybe. Evelyn?
Stay out. Need to. ODOT to access. The loss of revenue and to. How have we come? In the one problem that vehicles. Loss. Less.
Or or but. Still. I I don't. Sure they've talked about. I've seen.
After you went to sleep.
That's happened. That's how it is.
Moving on, um. We moved to number ten, new business A, I think. This is good news, I'm sorry, Frank gets all the good news.
More good news, starting May first, we're going to be reinstating. Route fifteen service to Warranton in Hammond. Uh, we have a scheduled attach. It'll be Wednesday through Friday. Uh, we don't have a short gap. Starting at seven forty five. Then it comes back in the afternoon, it goes to. This is, uh. Way overdue. Really felt bad. I think we approached this cautious. I I think this is. So people.
Paper, will there be? Make sure they're there. I'm sorry, Paul. Look, the pot is calling. There.
First of all, I would say that I was a little. Excited or. Concerned about. That that we. Now that we're here. We're proof. Be fair on the side of caution still. But my my question was. Because this is a split route, will this only be a one driver? Be the same.
I like the.
Yeah. General tour. Guys, there's a lot of. Jason. Thank you, Jason.
With the, when your school, our age, we got the bathroom. That we need, those were little schools, but we also. Yeah, I my question was. We need something for the first day. That was. We didn't. Yes, and I just finished the flyer, um, put in shelters. You know. Tell you guys what we included this today. Yeah. So we help. And what I mean, I mean. Schedules and flyers and all that. You didn't say, did you? She's gonna prepare a new flash out. We'll get them up tonight and then. Tomorrow on Facebook. All right. She's having someone about this. Did we already? Just something. Around. I don't think, I don't know. I don't remember that, I think. Oh, I would entertain a motion that just to make sure we're up enough that we approve starting round.
I would, I would approve. We started to probably be.
Here, and. We'll help out just to make sure we're. Bishop Smith, yes, Bishop McDonald, Bishop Ricky.
Yes.
Megan, yes, Bishop Rivers.
Yeah.
Julie, yes. She passes around with daily. And moving on to B, a new position. And mechanic, I think we decided about this to. Be the intent to leave. What did I say? And, yeah.
So, um. It it's traditional. At least the trends that I I've seen. Have. Lead. It's a union. Basically. That person is kind of in charge and keeping everything. Well, he assigns work. He does the building inspections by. Who are so. Kind of in charge, he doesn't have any kind of supervisory. Because it is a. But it it's generally, it's more responsible. And in fact, my lead mechanic. Stabs out. Replace me. So it's a good vote. Person. Current mechanic, and we only have one right now. It's quite an outstanding. He's basically been carrying. Last year. Risk. Super. I would like to. Even said. You show is dedicated. I think. Creating this. Putting him into. If you look at some of the other diesel mechanic positions out there right now. We could. We'll deal with some of it. This one. Be bigger.
It's out of work. We go.
Well, I didn't. Point. Yeah.
But I haven't enjoyed the time with. Why haven't. Of that song. Didn't have. Angela. It's the. Division that he demonstrated a little on his car. He's just.
Yes, he's, uh. He's. Thinking of learning. English. Or we speak to Phil Chandler there, speaking classes for that. Signed up to be classes, uh. For a kid. Um, he also runs a little business on looking. Does, uh. Landscape. Uh, agents. For his person. He's a single dad. He's available for the twenty four hours a day, he's Monday, he will calls in the evening, weekends. Uh, and he's one of those guys we talked about this morning. That stays in the district because he likes the district, he likes. And he likes the mission. Uh. Still. When you're a single dad and work those jobs and doing all that stuff, and somebody keeping on. Being a transgender shopper. Might not be. Used. I agree with that. Compensation looks more in line. Should exchange.
Here.
Of course. No, we can move along. Step. No, there's no. Yes.
Need a motion to, um. For, um, adding this, we're adding.
Do we need, do we need? Before I'm at, we need to prove that the budget presentation is already approved.
There's the other funds are there, I think. I need.
We've not been involved. Or we had.
But I think this is a person added something new. This is a whole new position, it would be like if. If we added an assistant to Mary, we would have to. Maybe can look that. Or how we. Can you look? And for. Yeah. Make sure.
It's getting that thing. So.
Thank you, Tristan. Any other discussion on this? All right. Bishop Smith, yes, Bishop Donald.
Yes.
Bishop Ricky.
Yes.
Bishop Lavelle. Withers.
I.
Bishop Lee. Merrill. Want to pass it, all right.
Okay.
All right, moving right down to executive director evaluation process, so we, um. We've changed the way we're. Doing. Our evaluation of the director. Um. We're trying to make it where staff feels more comfortable. Filling out the evaluations, evaluations are going to go out to every staff member, there's nothing being. Not gonna pick and choose who gets an evaluation. Um. We, the committee is met once and we came up with a revised, um. Questions. And which are in there except for, we're also. We're also separating out. Lead management. From strategy, it's that evaluation, those questions were a little bit. They shouldn't be a little bit different, so. Um, we'll be stepping those evaluations out probably. Soon, because we'd like to get those back in. Don't we to have them where they're handing them in? Where nobody knows. Who's actually putting, we're trying to make it as anonymous as possible, so more employees. Feel safe. Answering the surveys. Paul, Pierre, do you want anything, add anything to that?
No. No, when. Can you clarify what you mean by say? It comes to later.
In the, in, after all of this. Has happened throughout this year. We've heard where there were more employees that didn't feel safe filling out. The surveys, they thought people were watching who was filling them out and who wasn't filling them out, like it wasn't anonymous. And, um. They were afraid of the condemnation. And we've heard that quite a bit. So, like, somebody would get a survey but not fill it out, and so then we get, you know, you haven't sit. You haven't filled out your survey yet. This way. This way, um, we won't know who's turned one in and who hasn't.
Oh, we didn't know, we'll get back.
Yeah, so we'll be able to say, well, we sent out twenty five and one dot twenty five. Yeah, then we could send out, uh. Email to everybody, make sure everybody understands it's not going out to a person, hey, if you haven't turned in these. So we're trying to make it more comfortable for staff. To turn there. If you looked at it too, like even on the board, there was a place to sign your name. Now you didn't have to, but there was a place to sign your name on.
Well, that would suggest that hopefully we will be more comfortable, people would be willing to sign.
Yeah.
Where I didn't interest up there of the district, but in the past, there hasn't been much fear. And again, the key word is culture. You know. Because where I come from, we're always. If I was a steward. Of yours, it's always. Trying to change the culture so as you are positive. I mean, that's.
Oh, yes, I I. Well, Mary and I both worked at the county at one time or another. Depending on who's in the county then. Pamela.
I'm the executive director of performance evaluation. I cannot click and comment, I'll give you one anyway. In terms of leadership. The whole, there's nothing about this. Unusually responsible, you. Consideration pack. You ensure that. Unusually. Stable district. And to do. Yours.
I would go, we'll look at that over and. Add it, I I think our policy's kind of followed over that, but we'll look at that.
That's a good point, yeah. That's a good point.
Charles.
I, in my past experience of. Evaluation, all they throw out. They have a conversation. I mean, it appears to be off off. Officer crazy. But I don't submit. Superior responding. There's a, you know, it's a bag. I'm not, it's a bag. It seems like. Totally off base. And I think it was at least. I don't know who it is, try to figure out that. That's the way this is going, just. Personal saying. Saying. But any intro, all the bases will throw out. That one to five. Couple months. He's looking. They will play a. They're saying. And if you be on ODOT, it's. We do wanna have state meetings, state. State meeting on Wednesday. Basically. But some things are not, so.
And that's what I. That we will look at every single. On the checklist. And we're not doing, I don't, we're not doing the numbers this time. More comments, because it has only been almost six months. And so we kind of got the. Ratings one through four. At this time, doesn't believe.
We didn't, I didn't give the record goals past.
Right.
That we use.
So it's gonna be a little bit different. Probably done with therapy until it's only six months, part of this is getting credit on, so we're doing it once a year, next week or that. Project, so we. I will learn anything. Okay?
This point on is that, uh, Tracy had suggested in the evaluation session that. Your goals. How will the director end the thing? You would be part of this.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, directory evaluation, um. And V, tell me, that's on.
Yeah. Let's see more good thing. Let's see.
We're gonna come down to see that more.
We got a notification from. Blassey County. That we're gonna be receiving some additional. Tax fund. Beginning in the. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Tax year will be twenty thousand. Go up each year. And that's part of the. Georgia Pacific. One of them. Part of it.
Gosh, this is, this is. Okay. How do we make it spread? It's very general. It's a summary. Uh, all my. Agencies that we see that's.
Yeah, if you look. There's the county, it's giving forty percent. The district giving twenty.
The district's giving twenty-six percent. On course. It's a careful work. We're right there getting over three percent. Say it pretty happy, that we're getting a little bit more. I'll do more like.
Maybe that one. Should say exactly.
Alright. Okay. We're down to eleven. Correspondents. New correspondents, nothing. Executive Director Report.
We had a quick turnaround from our last meeting, we had to get them incorporated in a half weeks after. Having you bought the facilities at, David Rodriguez would start. It's gonna make our shelters look better. You run into, you got the cleaning shelter, sure you're welcome. Things like an outstanding man. I think.
Yeah.
Um, we are establishing the lead position. Um, we're also doing a staff wage study. Will be completed by the first budget committee meeting. Off presentation. Sue's working on that, right? And this all gets back to employees or human retention. Really need this organization, it's all. It's a very good, I follow. Really, we, S E P. They really care about what happened. Need to make sure that we pay. Um, and one of the things we have going in this, I possibly living here. Obviously, we'll never be able to. We need to at least be event. Like size transfer. Right, leading people, me and Debbie attended the Cannon Beach City Council meeting presentation on the second. It's pretty well attended. So. Presentation. Uh, we're instituting the employee of the quarter. And the respect, there may be two. The first quarter. A role of whom. Be fortunate to eat lunch with me. Hopefully, no one rejects the word. Uh, we're continuing our weekly team manager meeting. Very spirited, lively discussions. We've had a couple go almost, two will go almost four hour. People were able to voice their opinions and were able to build incentives. It's been, it's a good group, working through team. Um, improving the organization, we talked about instead of unallocated. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-three month. Thirty-seven day, which we're allocating to St. Roger. I have another meeting, though, uh, going over our office entry and fitting that. With our offices, updating. Oh. Use it. But it will be a cap out. Wait. Uh, management staff is taking more active role in the formation of the budget. Estimative. A prepared. For our first budget committee meeting. I'm in a really quick. Service delivery and operating, this is even more good news here. Uh, if you can come. As you know, restarting a warrant and route. For one within ten. Um, ridership. Starting to really uh increase. We saw a twenty percent total increase in fixed routes the last two. In a beach was kind of the outlier, it had a forty percent. So if you go to the next slide. Kind of go over, I did a little more breaking down of the routes, fire route, get an idea of our heaviest ridership is our work problem. Their pipeline. Our base. Outset. So here we see we went up to sixty-four, forty-three from our. Which is about a ten percent increase from February. Continues the trend. The next slide, please. Uh, this is paratransit ridership. It had a nice increase from February. Then getting into the specific routes, this is route. One oh one. Spirit here for seaside. And we're continuing to see steady growth. Once we restart, it will, they've been same. In one certain frame. So we're continuing to see growth there. Route ten in the story. It's kind of out of our story, seaside. And in each route. This seems to be. One of the heavier. Written routes in our system. So if we look at micro transit. This might be a route, yeah, it was. Trying. To do better. Weekend, so we. Yeah, this is route ten in the story. Yes, true. And here is the all-star of this group, in the seaside. In January, we had four hundred and seventy-five total riders, in February, one, six, eleven. In March, we had eight of the second. Route really. And this is the second connector, which runs just on. I had a side. I would expect to see, continue. I'm. Saturday. There's all. Recent. So. The uh. Were filming the bus. They stopped there for it. I noticed that they're tourists. It's having to. Yeah. And tourists getting, I assume to be the one that story. And so that, that's really good. And our hotel. That's still. I think that's happening. What happened? They. Okay, that seems like I want. Well, they went to the. The. In a beach city hall. There were a couple of tourists. People wandering around. Think they use that bus. That's really. Efficient, that route. Now you go to, go to, go to service, now come. Well, fair. Back, I can't. Two minutes there. It's all the guy, any question? Well, no, I'm just coming, I'm just, just on the, on the. Remember that. Time so long. Yeah, we find services, people have. I will eventually get there, it's, it's gonna take some time. Yeah.
This is just procedural, going back to the one of no. Mr. Boarder, no wonder, thank you to sign.
Yeah.
No, this is.
Yeah.
And we'll just get it, it, this company like our property taxes. Yeah. Thank you for that. It's coming in. Benefit of uh. They were, uh, maybe a little bit. Information about the um public. How we approach this. This. Uh, we could read that. You know, sorry, a while, so we talked about that this morning.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, basically what micro transit is, is uh a much smaller scale transit than having a big bus. Um, somebody can call up and arrange from a pit. Pick up at either bus stop or home. And we just take them directly there. So it's transit on a smaller scale. Um, traditionally, it's a little more expensive. But I think if we implemented. Within some of the gaps that we have currently within our route, some of the label. It proved to be useful. Done a lot of like that. Sort of, yeah, kind of like that.
That's sweet. The way it was, last year.
Cheaper than tank.
In the vows.
Way better than that. We'd have to probably look at city ordinance, go look back, make sure you go. Well, uh, get in touch with. City manager. And. Brother society. Will do.
Okay, um.
She's the variable five of that, or is that the standard?
Same there.
Cool.
Dollar right. Right? Jason, you want to give your report? You want to, is there anything to add to yours?
Fire that back or um. Entertaining game question. Basically, just been busy out there trying to get people to uh sign up for travel train. Um. Well. Even trying to get uh some trains engaged, going at some facilities and so forth. Trying to get the schools, so at the end of the year, the schools are really interested in training some new riders for the summer, so. Just been kind of looking forward to that, so, if any questions.
You've applied for any grants?
Yes, I bought us a good opportunity to apply for a grant for uh. Uh, S E O, and it's for an intern. So, uh, we seem to leave, I did a pretty good job of writing that. Being an interview submission, and so it's so. We have a. An intern coming, they're probably around Julyish sometime, right? So. Let's see, we'll get excited.
Yes. Okay, um. Mary. Didn't we? Okay, maybe, maybe, have a play. I'm sorry, was there Sue on, online?
Uh, yeah, I actually see this all in there, okay. Her audio.
Oh, I just have one. Forget her, she was on there. Uh, I think it's either getting ready for meeting, thinking about meeting, making a minute for meeting. And then, maybe, and then, and we're just moving ahead, this is wonderful. Getting things done, a lot of. Um. Also tend to. Put on here three very robust team leads, and they really were very. Got a lot, a lot covered. Not have an agenda. It's really nice meeting without agenda. It will go down three minutes. It's much faster. And much less. That means. I mean, you're not wrong, but anyway, um. Um. We have a lot to say except. It's my job. My job, like tonight, putting up rather. Shelters. Hopefully distributing a few of the. Schedules to those stores that are open. Wellington area, but so. Go back. Do a little bit.
Very, thank you very much, we get really set up. Activities. Hopefully, yeah. And. You've been here. I've got, kind of, heard. On holiday. We told you. We're.
Thanks. Very, very helpful to the board.
The executive director. Very.
She does way more than she takes credit for.
We uh. Team round. She. We've banned, so. Uh, sometimes it's good, you know. Take. You can kind of take a temperature. Team around. And, and well. Those best. Actually, if you want to do a. Good. It's. It's. It's almost talk random. But it means. That would be.
Thank you. Can you sense his? Audience, don't worry.
Yeah. He is, not, he is speaking to. Him there.
Right? Um. Gee, I don't know. So, you know, invite.
I'm going to see how. See, because you know. The uh. Person will. I'm always new to. New decisions. Well, I share a lot of network.
It was.
It's like. Interviews, learning hours.
Yeah. And she's very busy. She's a very valuable player in our, in sections also. Um. If there's nothing else. Okay, we took it. We took your thirty minutes off this.
On the world. We gotta count three and a half. It is covered, okay?
Um, would you ask for a double comment when we're back?
Well, I, I can say. If you have some doubt. Uh, so good. Back around. Schedules, I can check schedules all time, right? Someone who always. Well, there. I would never think about it, but. You can set. You can run, fix route, online. You will be in time. Apparently. And so. So. By then. Solves every type of picture problem in the marketplace.
I agree.
Can you see? We're drawn up. For it.
I want, and before you bank it down. I'm working on the times. Uh. I was in this building. About a year ago. Picking up a bunch of. Seals. Person handed me. It's after we have really difficult. It's bottom animal. You can handle. Okay, mom. It's okay. We have issues. We got them. That's what what to do. So. And. When uh. Us translator said, see. You know what to do. I appreciate that very much.
Alright.